Well, yeah, again, this was 40 years ago.
All right, we're gonna call our meeting order. Do you stand for the point of leave? Point of leave is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Johnny, can you hear okay? Okay. All right, roll call. Everybody is here, thank you. We do have proper notification of an open meeting. Welcome, everybody. We have one guest. We have to welcome our one guest, so.
Hi, everybody.
Um, you have a, uh, you have a, uh, wow, I'll address the board?
Yeah, if I could for just a minute.
Well, no, we'll hold out until the public session, but please sign in on that sheet.
Yep, I did.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, our first action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2020, regular board meeting, which is in your packet.
I'll make a motion.
Done.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on those? Hearing that all in favor, state aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next action item is a resolution to approve the bill list, which is also in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that?
What were all the refunds to all the kids? Is that from graduation?
Yeah, every, every year we have a number of refunds from graduating seniors that, uh,
Oh, like lunch accounts or? I was thinking maybe it had something to do with graduation.
No, it was lunch accounts and there's maybe a few more from last year because of the closure or the school building shutdown.
Yeah, it seemed like they were a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Hearing that all in favor, state aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is communications and comments from members of the public. All right. Go ahead, uh, three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
I don't even need that one.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Danny Miller. I work with Equitable Advisors. Um, I actually service some of the districts that are represented here and also the Arrowhead district. Um, the big thing I wanted to make the Arrowhead district aware of in particular is our high school scholarship program for seniors. I've been trying to get the information out to as many high schools as I can, because it's a little difficult to do with the current situation. Um, I have dropped some off at the front desk, emailed the guidance council, but I just want to make the board aware as well, so they can get that information out as well. The top prize is $25,000 and there's 10 winners every year nationwide. Uh, Wisconsin's had a $25,000 winner two out of the top three years, or two out of the last three years, and I'm really trying to make sure that happens again. So I'm doing the best to do my part. Um, I don't know where you guys would like these. That answers that, you know? And that's all the time I need.
All right.
Any questions?
There's the scholarship program?
It's a scholarship program that we run every year. Uh, it's been going on for several years.
What are the qualifications?
Um, they have to be seniors. And, um, as far as winners, it's just getting an application in. Um, December 15th is the deadline and there's 10,000 applicants. If that number gets hit first, we cut off the deadline. So it started on September 1st. I mean, I can get along as quickly as I can, but obviously things are slow, so I apologize for being here later, but later's better than never.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir.
As promised, less than three minutes.
Okay. Uh, before we get to the superintendent's report, a couple of things. Um, I was just talking to Laura, if you noticed, one of our, our freshman girls won the Division One Individual State Championship in golf yesterday. Yeah, shootout on top of the.
And our girls' golf team were the state runner-ups.
Okay, there you go.
Lots to celebrate, girls' golf.
Girls got, uh, girls rock, right?
Totally.
Okay, then we also want to take an opportunity to recognize Kent Rice and Diana Behringer, who were recognized by the WASB for achieving a Level Two WASB member recognition. So attended enough meetings to get credit for a Level Two. You got a ways to go to catch out with like 11 or 12, or whatever. The most we can have. And your prize gave, brought your prize for it.
You're right, I didn't do that.
Sorry.
I have no idea. So congratulations. Okay, superintendent's report. Laura.
Oh, the first thing on the superintendent's report is the draft of the school year 2020, 2021, 2022 calendar. We're barely into this school year and we're already planning for next school year. Our process is that our administrative team reviews a drafted calendar. I also bring it to the seven superintendents of the K-8 districts. So it's in their hands, it's in our hands, and then I share it with the board at the October meeting as a draft. The same timing, I sent it out to our staff as a draft for the opportunity for feedback. So the school board represents the community, so if you have feedback, we'll take that in. Staff members have the opportunity to provide feedback. And the K-8 districts, although we have eight separate school districts, we try to, um, have the core of the calendar be pretty similar because we share our families and our students. Those other districts have different teacher contract lengths, they have different, even at the elementary level, there's different number of required hours of instruction, they have a different amount of professional development days. So our calendar does look different, uh, for each of those eight school districts. The drafted calendar that I'm bringing you is extremely similar to the last several years. I'll point out two minor differences because that's really all that exists, are two minor differences. One difference, um, is related to spring break. This current calendar year that we're in right now, it's actually the anomaly when it comes to spring break because you might remember a few years ago, most districts in southeastern Wisconsin, um, decided to use a common spring break and that helps especially with staffing, uh, for our, uh, teachers and staff members across the region to have a similar spring break. This current school year, it's not the last full week of March because we would come back for a few days and then there would be the Easter holiday. So all the districts are linking this year's spring break to Easter, which actually allows for one additional day off for students to build in somewhere in the calendar. So this particular May, we would have a four-day weekend over Memorial Day. The calendar draft that you have in front of you, Easter goes back to the typical last whole week in March. It, that, um, means that over the Easter holiday, we have a four-day weekend. That's something that we had promised to our families and so we do, will not have a four-day weekend over Memorial Day weekend. So usually we have a three-day Memorial Day weekend. The current school year that we're in, there's sort of a bonus day and now this calendar goes back to the normal. The second minor change that I would draw your attention to is if you look at exam week in January. We typically had one professional development, kind of a grading day after exams and we would put that, um, the last several years, we've had that on Martin Luther King Junior Day. There was a request from families, from the K-8 schools, from students, so that's become a tradition. We looked at having the exams that week of, uh, January 12th, 13th, and 14th. It really is early, so that wasn't preferred. Um, moving the exams down, it doesn't help to have a grading day before the exams. And we also know that we are woefully short on professional development days for our teachers. So what we looked at doing as an administrative team, um, we have extra hours built in to our school calendar beyond the required 1,137 hours that Department of Public Instruction requires for high school. We have almost two days' worth of extra student hours. So we're capturing some of those hours of extra week, I mean, for snow days essentially. We're taking back, for lack of a better phrase, we're taking back a day's worth of those snow days or snow hours in order to have an additional professional development day added to the calendar. We're comfortable in doing this because now that our students and teachers are becoming more and more proficient with virtual learning and online learning, we don't foresee ever needing to make up snow day time like we had to a few years ago where we had five days to make up. We can do that virtually now. That's become very common across our region of the state. So we wanted to capture that time as professional development and, uh, we're still well within the required number of hours for our students. So the next part of our calendar process would simply be gathering feedback, looking at any potential changes based on feedback, and then we would bring it to the board for your discussion and action at your November 11th meeting. Uh, I can share so far from staff, this went out the same day that your board packet went out, so Friday. The only feedback I received was to point out my typo in the middle column where I had the exam dates listed from the, I think I had it from the 11th to the 13th, or I can't remember the dates, but the semester exams in that middle column of written text should read January 19th to the 21st. There was, there has been no staff feedback, um, expressing any sort of concerns because this is the same calendar that we typically always have. So if you have any immediate feedback, I'm happy to hear that. If you take time to review it at a different point and have feedback, feel free to give me a call or drop me an email and then we'll bring that with the rest of our feedback as the K-8 superintendents and I continue to talk and our own administrative team continues to talk about the calendar.
So Laura, you were mentioning like for snow days that we would probably go into virtual? Is that what you're talking about for like this year and next year?
We, it could be indefinite. We still would have close to a full amount of extra instructional hours built in, so we could do a snow day where everyone just has off. Or we could keep learning going and so teachers and students are both teaching and learning from home, so we don't have to make up the time. That could happen on that snow day or perhaps it could happen in a different timeframe. You know, it could be a different day during the year to make up that time virtually.
So Laura, you, if I understood you right, we've actually taken some of those snow days or whatever and built in more time for professional development.
Right.
But we still only have six days of professional development here, don't we? Three, four, five, six. I only, I still only see six days of, uh, professional development on the calendar. Isn't that a typical?
Arrowhead usually has two, um, like prep grading days and three professional development days, so five altogether.
Okay.
This would add one more. That still makes us, the average, um, is about eight professional development days, so we still are short compared to other districts, but it's a way to gather, to gain one more day without extending the teacher's contract where we could pay now tens of thousands of dollars for an extra day added to a contract.
For some three, for some reason I thought we were already at six days. Okay, six, it's still six.
No.
How do we gain time? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so this will be carried over until next month for the.
All right, the next item is our student enrollment report and Jeff is going to run through that.
Sure, so each, uh, you know, the, we do two counts every year, a third Friday in September count and a second Friday in January count, so this is our first one for the year. It was September 18th. Take account of the kids that were here in their seats on that day and then if they attended any day before September 18th, we would be able to count them as long as they attended Sunday after the 18th if they happened to be absent on that day. So that's how that works. There's a misconception out there that they have to be there the day before or the day after and that's not true. It's any day before, any day after, we would get to count them, so. And virtual students were counted just like a, a student sitting in the, in the seats for us, as long as we were providing the education. So in the, the first of the eight pages here is, is just our head count by grade level and how that equates into a, a state aid enrollment number for each of those. I'm gonna kind of come back to that or just gloss over that and go right down to the second page because I think that gives us an idea of how we did compared to what we had predicted and compared to previous years. So about in the middle of the page, I'm gonna read from left to right. So we've got ninth grade through 12th grade there, resident full-time students by grade level, the non-resident open enrollment students that come into our district from other school districts through open enrollment. We've got a couple part-time resident students that take a couple, two classes during the school year. They're allowed up to two courses per year. Uh, we call it part-time enrollment. So we've got two of those, um, for a total present count of 1,928, total absent of 1,58, and a head count of 2,086. So 2,086 is our head count. How does that compare to last year? If you look down just below that number, you'll see, um, 2,019 PI, 1563, we're at 2,106. So we're down 20 from last September on the head count. And our budget prediction or budget development, we were down 10. We had predicted to be down, uh, I'm sorry, we're, we're up 10 over what we had predicted. We had predicted to be down at 2,076. Going back to the top numbers as we were reading across there, uh, you start, you take that head count, you subtract out the non, I'm sorry, you add back in our residents, now this, I'm sorry, this is the non-residents, so. You start with your head count, you subtract out your non-residents, those kids that are attending, are sitting in our seats through open enrollment. And there they are by grade level, 53 freshmen, 49 sophomores, 48 juniors, and 65 seniors for a total 215, uh, non-resident students sitting in our seats. We're subtracting those out from our total head count and then we're gonna add back in, if you work your way to the, almost to the far right, there's, there's some smaller numbers, it totals up to 64. We have residents that attend other schools, so we have 64 of those, 12 freshmen, 15 sophomores, 17 juniors, and 20 seniors that attend other school districts. We add those back into our count and that's how we get our, into our state aid enrollment numbers. So it's a true FTE resident count that we use for state aid and revenue limit purposes. So that's how the numbers are calculated. You can see how we compared to, um, what our prediction was for state aid purposes and revenue limit. We were predicting 1,938 for the budget projection. We ended up at 1,933 true residents, so a little lower, down five from our prediction and down 49 from where we were a year ago. And you can see the, the loss. So we are on a declining, um, mode like we have been for the last few years in terms of count. Any questions so far on those pages?
From a state aid standpoint though, we're actually paying, we're getting paid for the, the open enrollment ins and we're losing money for the open enrollment outs.
Right. Every open enrollment student coming in, we get $8,125 for this year and everyone that goes out that is a resident of ours, we pay $8,125 up to those districts.
They sort of pay the same amount.
It's really a, it's an aid adjustment, so on that last aid payment, they, they adjust our aid up for all those that come in by $8,000 a student and then they take our aid away by $8,000 to 64 students for those that, um, attend other districts. And how much do you give for a in-residence student that stays at Arrowhead? Is it like 12? About $10,200 is what we get in revenue limit authority. Okay. So, uh, we'd, we'd much rather have residents. That, that helps the operating budget, but, uh, you definitely also want to be on the winning side of that open enrollment piece. So, and we're, we're doing very well. We're attractive district as we've, we've known for a while, so that's good news. The next pages, as we go down to page three, this gives you, you know, really three through eight is giving you the detail on those open enrollment students. So how many were new applicants? How many are returning applicants? And then it'll add up to that total of 215. We go on to page four, it, it talks, okay, those new applicants, what schools are they coming from? On page five, the returning applicants, what schools are they coming from? On page six, it's the open enrollment outs. So our students, where are they going to? And so we've got, uh, the number of new applicants and the number of returning applicants. On page seven, we've got where the new ones going to. And on page eight, we've got where the returning, or the ones that continue to open roll out, where, where are they going to? So it's just a little more detail about the open enrollment and, and where those numbers are, are coming from, just to give us data on, on, um, where our kids are going or where we're getting them from.
And as I said, some of those open enrollment in students are coming from a fair piece away, West Bend, Lartertown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of those are surprising when you get one or two, but they may be coming with teachers at times or, or their parents live, or, I'm sorry, parents work locally. Sometimes it works out that way.
Another thing that's a little bit surprising is the juniors and seniors that are coming in as new. I wouldn't expect a senior to be moving to a different school district there. You know, I'm not sure that this seems real.
Sometimes athletics will be, uh, well, no, that's not true because then they have to wait a year. Right.
Must be the chess club.
We heard of some of, you know, being that we were fully in-person.
Yes.
We did have gotten a few that, that came in, knew that, that were, that were new to us this year. So that, that was a, a bit of a factor. I'll go back to our prediction. Our prediction was 201. Last year we had 203, so we're up about 12 students over last year, so that would make sense that maybe, you know, their district wasn't planning or didn't know what they were gonna do, virtual or hybrid, and so they said, we want to come here. That could be some of that. When you look at the open enrollments out, we were predicting, uh, 63 to go out, so we actually have 64 going out. Last year we had 79 going out, so we're down from last year, which is, which is good. So overall, it's a net gain on the, from a budget standpoint and good education for kids. So that's all I have there unless you have questions.
I have one question. Grantsburg, if it's unfamiliar to me, where is that school district?
I want to say that's like in southwest Wisconsin, but I'm not 100% sure.
There's some times where we have open enrollment outs where it seems like, how in the world could they possibly attend Grantsburg or Ripon or whatever? And those are often their, um, e-learning or online schools. So the kid is still sitting in their Merton house, Heartland house, but it's, in fact, most of our open enrollment out is about, um, E-Achie or, I can't remember, E Academy.
We always have a few from McFarland.
Yeah, not, they have a, they have a.
Do they have one as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ozaki has a virtual school.
Okay.
Answer your question, Dave.
Walkie show.
Walkie show.
Grantsburg is northeast of Minneapolis, St. Paul. Whoa.
Oh, really?
So much for southwest Wisconsin.
There's a Grantsburg in Wisconsin.
Jefferson County.
Yeah, there is.
That's Grant County is down there.
Oh, wait a minute.
So it's not like it was there.
No.
Hey, there's Grantsburg, Wisconsin. Yeah. Yeah.
Did we lose any students that went like 100%, like online homeschool this year due to circumstances?
I'm not sure about that. Actually, I know of one because we had a family that was waiting until mid-October to sign up for, um, homeschooling. So I know of one.
The, the overall head count, well, and that could be the open enrollment factor, is up 10 from what we had predicted, but, you know, we're up 12 on the open enrollment residents or non-residents coming in too, so that could have impacted the head count and it likely is what had impacted it because our state aid count is right about where we had predicted based on our historical reductions in students.
All right, and then the third item on my superintendent report is actually, Jeff, again, our Act 185 Data Collection Report. Uh, this was a, a new law that came into effect because of the school shutdown last spring and schools moving to virtual instruction. The state or the legislature wanted a report on, um, what that looked like, how much schools might have saved in expenses, how much schools spent in expenses. So the law actually says that the Department of Public Instruction must turn in a report by January 1st and therefore W, uh, Wisconsin DPI is having us turn in our district reports by November 1st. So Jeff can run through that.
Yep, so this is, um, yeah, the Department of Public Instruction's way of collecting the data that they need to report to the legislature for, and it's due to legislature by January 1st, so the DPI will kind of comb through all the data between now and then before they submit their report. So this is our report, or, or this is what we'll submit as a, you know, one survey, actually the survey's available now, but we wanted to present it to you before we went and put it into the survey. And I have one amendment already to make before we go and do that, but the first few pages of it are really, how did you do virtual instruction? What, uh, issues did you run into? How did you resolve those? And so I'm, we, we spent a lot of time on that all last spring and, and summer talking about that, so I'm gonna kind of gloss over that and get right to the numbers and we can come back to some of that if you'd, you'd like to later, but, uh, I'm gonna, everything in italics is something that we plan to submit in our report. If it's not italicized in some of the samples that they gave, then that wouldn't be something that we would put in for Arrowhead. So that's how to read through it there. Moving down to page. Still going. I'm on page nine now. So page 10, I think, is kind of interesting. They're asking a question on how much education was provided during the, the period of March 12th through the end of the school year. And so we had to make an estimate. We're ranging, we made a range of 87.5% to 100%. And the way we came to that is on the next page, actually, it's kind of delineated out. We were 75% through the school year already where we provided 100% of the instruction. The last 25% of the year, we, we said, teachers if you can't cover it all going virtual and that, uh, you'd, you'd be able to cover, we expect that you'd cover at least 50% of it. So we said, well, some teachers may have done it all, others may have done that 50%, so that's how we got to the 87.5 to 100%. I'm hoping they're gonna allow me to put a range in when I get to the survey. We'll see. If they don't, I'll pick the, the middle of those two numbers as the amount that we, we actually provided.
And just to jump in with additional comparisons, when the state shut down schools, um, I believe that was March 13th, Arrowhead started back up on March 16th. We had one day that we didn't have students learning, so it was that prep day. So it was all weekend and one prep day. There were some districts, um, that went two or three weeks where they were just shut down. MPS, for instance. None of us knew how long that was going to last. We were thinking two or three weeks. And so some districts, like an MPS, they didn't have any instruction for two or three weeks. So their report would look differently than ours, uh, because we, we missed one day and then it just depended on teacher and what they could do through virtual instruction. You can imagine some classes were very challenging to provide the same type of instruction, like a ceramics art class or an autos class. You can't provide the same curriculum. You can't provide the same curriculum online for an autos class or a ceramics class as you can in the classroom. So they were modifying their lessons, of course, in their units, but there's only so much you could do last spring. Different scenario now.
Okay. So, yeah, they, when they were teaching 50%, it didn't mean that they worked every other day or anything like that. They were, they were having class every day. So now moving on to page 12, which asks us, report the number of staff by position who were laid off during that period of March 12th to June 30th. And you can see we had seven paraprofessionals, 15 in the pupil services area, which is really welcome center, attendance and supervision. Eight administrative support, I think welcome center actually belongs down administrative support. So that's part of the eight there. And the one food service, which was just a partial, so I may be pulling that back out because I think they're looking for the ones that were fully laid off. Page 12, the number of staff reassigned. We didn't reassign anyone. We either used them in their position. And there was, you know, maybe someone shifted over to helping more with attendance or things like that. But in general, they pretty much stayed in their same position, so they don't have any report there. Page 13, how many breakfasts did we serve? Almost 20,000, similar to the next page. How many lunches did we serve? Almost 20,000. Now, speaking of breakfast and lunches, the federal government just put out this week that they are providing those free lunches for the remainder of the school year. Initially, it was, well, the day before school started, they gave us notice that it's provided through December 31st. So districts had to scramble to try to make sure that they were able to eat. Well, some districts just chose to say, forget it, week one, we're charging, and then we'll move on to week two. We were able to pull it off and on day one, provide the free lunches at school. But that's going to extend through the school year rather than through December 31st like it was originally put out there.
And that's for all students?
For all students. Any student that gets a qualified lunch, which is the entree and a fruit or vegetable, it's got to have three components to make it a meal. And if it qualifies as a meal, it's reimbursable.
So, so all students will get the free lunches?
All students, not, not just the free reduced students. All students, yep. And my guess is they're thinking there's still plenty of students across the nation that are going virtual. And so they want to be sure that they're provided lunches while they're, they're being taught virtually. Ours are here for the most part, but there's, even those virtual students of ours, they could come in and pick up their lunch. We have that available to them. And it's not costing the district anything. It's completely funded by the federal. It's a complete reimbursement to the district. We didn't serve any dinners. We only do the breakfast and lunch, so that's on page 16. And then they ask how we provided those meals. And then question 17 talks about the expenditures that either increased or decreased. So utilities, transportation, food service, which is contracted, so I'm not even sure they're going to ask us about our food service because that really relates to Chartwell's and their company. So I just put it in here in case they ask that question. But on utilities, how did I get there? What I did is I looked at our three-year average spend the last three years on utilities and compared it to this year, actual spend. And that's how I got to that about $66,000 in reduced utility use for that period of time. So we were, you know, on our average of the last three years compared to what we actually spent this year was a difference of 66,000.
Quick question for you. Shouldn't utilities and transportation be in brackets?
For, to show the decrease?
Right.
Yeah, probably. And so it says reduced by an estimated, it's like two negatives might make a positive, I'm not sure.
All positive.
But you can look at it that way.
It's a little response up here, you know, positive or negative for decrease expense.
Right. When they get to the actual survey question, I'm sure the survey will be set up in a format that it's going to require us to put it in a certain way. So this is just more for visual viewing. You know, this is a PDF, a Word document that won't be turned into us. Let's just take the answers and enter them into the survey data. Transportation was done in the same way, about $71,000. So what we ended up doing with transportation was following our contract and paying the contracted rate minus driver wages and minus fuel. Because they had, they still have their overhead cost of, you know, keeping the operation going as well as keeping, you know, their buses up to date and things like that. And we wanted them to be in business when we started the school that year. So some districts paid drivers all the way through. We chose not to, not to do that. And the whole Arrowhead District Transportation Consortium went that way. Personnel expenditures, with those furloughs that we did, we estimate that we reduced our cost on those positions by about $177,000. At the same time, you'll see at the bottom, we increased our unemployment insurance cost by about $50,000. So the net savings was only about $128,000, not the 177 showing here. We had some increased technology costs of about $7,000.
Jeff, does the unemployment is actually out of our pocket or does that come from funding we pay into?
That's actually out of our pockets. So districts work differently than private businesses where they pay into a fund. We pay based on what we actually use. So we were on pace to pay under $1,000 in unemployment costs for the year. And then COVID hit and we were, we were hit with another $49,000. So it was a big, big hit. Now, the federal portion, that additional money would have been paid for by the federal government in the house. The six, the additional $600 that was provided, that wasn't a district expense. That was a federal government expense.
So was Catherine having that around to pay again?
Maybe so. They're still behind me.
Yeah.
Let's see, the next part. Oh, this is estimating for the current year, 2021. What are we estimating in utilities? We're not, we're not estimating any difference in our normal utilities because we're going to be open. Transportation, same thing. The food service, again, we may or may not be reporting that. But we had some packaging costs that we, you know, just prepackaged meals into bags and boxes individually. And that was estimated about $32,000. We've kind of pulled back on that because it was such a monstrous amount of stuff going into the garbage. And so we pulled back on it and started going back to trays and not having all that waste. But even so, it's, it's going to be a cost of $32,000 there. Increased personnel cost. We have increased substitute costs because of COVID quarantines and, and expanded FMLA leaves related to COVID. So we're estimated, we have some additional aid time, not a lot, a couple hours of aid time for contact tracing. So we're estimating an increase of $132,000 over what we would have had in a normal year for substitute costs. And it's a fairly real number so far. Basically, how I did that is we've had two FTE. If you count up the pieces of FTEs that have been out for quarantine and things, it averages out to about two per month. So I just calculated two times eight months going forward, and that was the substitute cost plus those that are going on expanded FMLA leaves or already are. And those that we know are going to continue for the full year and that type of thing, where they're probably teaching virtually, but we're still having someone supervise the classroom. So those costs are in that number. And then the other things would be increased technology costs of about $45,000, just getting access and software and equipment for teachers to teach virtual. Increased PPE, personal protective equipment. And we put an HVAC mechanical virus mitigation system in our band and music areas. Yeah, ionic, ionic something.
Well, the aeroplasm system.
Okay, aeroplasm, ionic system. So that's in that number. And then Kevin just provided me another, about 6,600 worth of sanitation supplies that I'll add, that are not into this number yet, but I'll add that in there also. So that puts us at about $22,000, $23,000 in the PPE and HVAC. And then the last questions are just on transportation again, and it just goes over, how did we do that for last year? So that's the survey that will take this information and I'll actually complete it in the actual survey document that they have out there for us. Could I?
Yikes.
Yikes. Well, Sue provided all the instructional stuff, so Sue and, between Sue and Laura, so thank you for that.
I just noticing on those pages with the additions and savings and all that kind of stuff, you know, some of that's in the current budget here. Are we going to have an audit report as to how we ended the last school year, like what we're, what is fund balance and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Those numbers are all, we've already said?
They're all set, yep. Everything's wrapped up, the annual report is submitted. So we, we came out, just off the top of my head, about, we used about, not quite 400,000 in fund balance. We had predicted to use about $2.5 million in fund balance. Some of the projects, though, weren't as far along as we had planned either. Some of the B&amp;G projects, especially the site work out there, so that'll get pushed into the new year, which we were planning for a balanced budget going into the new year. But being that we push some of those projects forward, we'll now use some fund balance in the, in the new year, or at least budget that way, to cover those projects that we did cover out of last year, if that makes sense. But then in addition, I believe we bring our auditors in in December each year to go through the audit report. With the finance committee or is it finance committee?
General operating budget, we did okay.
We did very well overall. And you can see the savings wasn't significant. I mean, it was just COVID-related savings. It was the transportation of about $70,000 and another 70,000 personnel. Or was it 100 and 128 numbers? So maybe 200 and 300,000 on there. But overall, the budget did very well. And we came up, you know, we've been planning to use fund balance for different years for different projects. And we haven't had to tap into it as nearly as significantly as we had planned. So good budget for last year.
Okay. And then my last item of the superintendent report, I want to provide a referendum communication update. We are in the final stretch. The next time we have a school board meeting, it will be after the election. So for me and my office, that's like, we're in crunch time for communications. So throughout the time since we approved having a referendum, there's been a lot of work and effort in terms of, for instance, revitalizing our website and updating the website. I've met with the K-8 schools, their superintendents, and provided handouts. Much more challenging this year to communicate about the referendum because there really isn't anything in person. So the past two attempts, although we did not have a lot of citizens come in for open houses and tours and superintendent chats, we didn't get a lot of traffic, but we were at least able to offer those. It's, it is more challenging. And even providing handouts to our K-8 schools, no schools are allowing nonessential visitors. So they each have a stack sitting in their front office, but rarely is anyone going in and out of their office. So some of the communications have been more challenging. But other types of communications are just like you would expect, at least twice a week. I'm posting on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, emails going out to answer questions, calls that come in, answering those calls. You've heard before, we have three mailers going out this year, passed two referendum attempts, we did two. And I have stacks of extras here. So this, you all received in your mailbox the first time around, we have extras. If you work somewhere or if you know of a place to put them where people will see them, please take some. Our second mailer, which hit your mailbox, I believe, last week or maybe about the weekend before, this is the heavy-duty informational one. All of these draw people to the website if they want more information, and they can call me or email me. Again, I have a stack of these, so if you have anywhere to share them or place them, please take some. And then our four, or our third mailer will hit mailboxes sometime between the 22nd, 23rd, so next, late next week or early the following week. It was going to look very much like this postcard again until we got some interesting news from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. We were projecting, when we figure out all our calculations, we were projecting very conservatively for the overall land or property value to increase by 2.5%. Usually, it's more like 4%, but we would never want to overpromise the community something that we have no control over. So initially, we were projecting our mill rate, if the referendum does not pass, that mill rate would go down. And if the referendum did pass, from our $2.88 now, our mill rate, we were projecting it could be as high as $2.91, right? Well, the Department of Revenue equalized property value came in at 6%. We were projecting 2.5%. So what that means is there's more property value in our region, which spreads out that tax differently. So our postcard has been revamped, and what will hit the mailboxes will look very similar to this on the back, the basics of the referendum. Because we want people to know there's no long-term debt, the funding sunset is in five years, there's no interest payments, and the tax proposal is tax, or the referendum funding proposal is tax-neutral because we're taking our referendum debt from 1999 and just keeping it going for five more years. That's on one side. And then the great news is that even if the referendum passes, Arrowhead's mill rate will still go down. So instead of $2.88, our mill rate will go down to 283 or 282. So we can pass the referendum and the mill rate will still go down. If the referendum does not pass, that mill rate would go down to about $2.58 or $2.57. So we think that that's important for our community to know and see. Referendum doesn't pass, here's where your tax mill rates will be. If it does pass, our mill rate still goes down. Arrowhead's mill rate has gone down every year for the last 10 years, which I think is, is also important for people to understand. Our school scores, our achievement, our student success continues to be at least the same as every year or increasing. But our mill rate for our citizens is going down. So we have a good value here for education. So I wanted to make sure you understood what, what's still happening for communications. And then depending on the results of that referendum, we'll have a lot more communications going out to the community as well.
And tomorrow we get our final piece of information, the state aid number. That's why we can't say whether it's going to be 258 or 257 because it'll be darn close to one of those numbers because we're likely, but we'll have that nailed down tomorrow. We get the information in ten, is what it's scheduled to come out at. So that's the only holdup on this. And then the other piece, as Laura said, we are providing a great value, but at the same time, we have some major infrastructure needs that, that great value, we're going to have to pull from instruction if we don't have additional funding to fix our roof and our HVAC. As you all know, but we can get that word out to the public, I think it's really important that the need of this is significant, just like it was in 2016 and '17. But now we're, it's a, it's a smaller ask and just to prove that we're going to be efficient with the dollars.
Okay, thanks, Laura. Moving on to committee reports, first one is curriculum. Sue?
Are you telling about the day? Are you talking about, I mean, do we have to talk about this extra day that everybody was talking about?
Yes. You want me to jump right into that?
I mean, you know about it, but tell us more.
Sure. As the curriculum committee heard, and there were extra people there, so of our board members, six of nine of you were at that curriculum committee meeting. So hopefully you recall, and the proposal is linked. So hopefully, you recall, and the proposal is linked into your agenda. Our teachers are working a significant amount of extra time this year because they are teaching students in front of them. There might be 15 students in front of them, and there might be 10 online at the same time. That takes a lot of extra work. It takes extra work and learning in technology, in assessment practices. It's revamping curriculum and units and lessons. And in order to maintain high-quality instruction, we feel that we have to provide our teachers additional time. Time for their professional development, time for collaboration with their department teams, and just time for their own lesson and unit and assessment preparation. At the same time, we want student learning to continue. And student learning can happen, not necessarily sitting in a classroom. So what we've proposed is eight days. The first one, this, the committee approved moving forward with on October 2nd because it was before this meeting. So we have seven additional days proposed, the first Friday of each month, to be a day that would be an asynchronous virtual learning day for students and a professional collaboration and learning day for teachers. The committee wanted to, we talked to that over, and the committee wanted to move that idea forward. We also had some discussion at that committee meeting about, is that is that adequate time? Is that enough time? What could that look like? Our teachers, absolutely, teachers across the country could use more time. I think administratively, at this point, we're most comfortable with the one day a month. It could be a different, it could be down the road. We're coming back and requesting more. I did some work, where's my, where's my old lady glasses? So I don't have every district in southeastern Wisconsin in this survey, but I have many of them. Let me just run through some information. There are several, probably a dozen school districts that are completely virtual. So school districts that are completely virtual, they may have students learning synchronously. Yeah, the teacher is teaching via screen, and asynchronously. That's the typical online instruction is a mix of those. But it's asynchronous, that does build in time for teachers to prep their next lessons and to grade and and do their typical work. So a good 10 to 12 districts that are purely virtual, so there is time built in for teachers. We have another, I don't know, at least another dozen, they're in our hybrid mode. So a couple days a week, students are in-person. At the same time, half the students are learning virtually, and then the second half of the week, they flip-flop. In most cases of districts, not all, but in most cases, there is a full day a week where it is a virtual, like an asynchronous day. Not all districts, though. Some of them, it's a flip-flop every every other day, so there is no day when every student is virtual. Most hybrid districts provide one day of all virtual, which builds in extra teacher prep and learning time. In Waukesha County, I thought that's probably, I guess, more, I don't know, nearby or more relevant. Let me just run through some of the numbers. Peewaqui, right now, is, they started in a hybrid, and they're trying to move into in-person. They're there with the elementary students, but middle and high school are still hybrid. What they're providing is every single Wednesday is virtual for all students. They have eight professional development days. So if you take the 36, if this lasted all year long, if you took 36 Wednesdays, they're eight professional development days, it's 44 days. Swallow School District has 16 professional development days built in. Not every district answered this survey. Merton School District has seven professional development days, and they're using December 21st and 22nd as additional professional development days, so they'll have nine. Waukesha has every single Monday as a virtual learning day for all students with built-in teacher time. They have seven professional development days, so that is 42 days. Muskivo, Norway, they have 10 professional development days. They're using November 23rd, 24th, March 26th, April 30th as additional virtual learning days, professional development days, so that's 14 days. Arrowhead, we have three professional development days. We're proposing the eight Fridays, which would give us 11 days. Maguano, they have four professional development days, and they don't have a plan yet for additional days. New Berlin has 10 professional development days. They don't have a plan yet for anything additional. Hamilton School District has five professional development days. They do have a plan to add extra virtual days and teacher built-in days, but they weren't willing to share that because it hasn't gone to their board yet. Elm Brook has 10 professional development days. Some of those were half-days, and they're moving all of their half-days to full days for professional development. And actually, students would not be virtually learning. Let's see, Menominee Falls, eight and a half professional development days. Kettle Moraine has nine professional development days. Similar to us, they're bringing 10 virtual learning professional development days to their school board for a total of 19. Oconomowoc has seven professional development days, and they don't know what their plan is yet for adding because they're just coming out of hybrid where they did have one day per week. So the reason I share all that is it is not unusual that teachers are going to need more time. One of the other things that came up at our meeting was, is there a way to capture time for teachers to do their planning and their learning, but still have students in the building? And as we looked through possible options and brainstormed, we don't have substitutes, so we just, we don't have substitutes to be able to free up teachers from their classrooms to do that in teams. I think the best we have now would be just letting teachers know that as they need time to catch up or to plan, they might have to once in a while say to your class, it's independent work time. And you've got a long-term project, I'm not going to teach, you're going to work on your long-term project, almost like a study hall. I mean, that's something that's conceivable that would be an individual teacher. It's not the same as collaborating with their their teammates. So at this point, we're bringing forward those additional seven days on a Friday. Students would be learning virtually at home. This last October 2nd, when we did this, staff members were extremely thankful. And interestingly, we have a student survey out right now, our virtual learners. We want to know, how is this going? Last spring, it was all new, it was emergency learning. We knew we had a lot of growing to do. How's it going now? Our students are, I mean, they're young adults, they're comparing from last spring to now and just saying heads and tails better and and different than it used to be. One student, Sue Casetta, copied and pasted the student's comment. And I thought, well, I don't know, you you don't expect students to, you know, necessarily think in turn. They're young, they're they're youngsters. They think about themselves, it's their school, it's their learning. But one student wrote, which I thought was really insightful. "That one Friday when everyone was virtual and both students and teachers got a catch-up day, that was nice. The following week, the teachers seemed more prepared, and it gave more time to work on anything I needed to do. Maybe make Fridays or Wednesdays like last semester a catch-up day for both students and teachers. Still have assignments, but simple ones that don't need to be on Zoom." So I don't, we were looking at it more from a teacher perspective and their their needs in order to keep instruction high-quality, and this was a different perspective that at least, you know, one student out of our, now we have close to 600 that are virtual. At least one of those students thought to comment, like, they appreciated it too.
Jim, if we if we approve this, we still need the yearly hours requirement, or are we okay with that?
Right. No, we would not be asking for an instructional waiver. Most districts, more than 50% have already put in a request for a waiver of instructional hours. We don't think we'll need to, but we can ask for that waiver from DPI at any time, even after the school year because we're in, you know, pandemic situation. But the students would still have virtual learning time on these Fridays, so it still counts for instructional hours.
And staff is at the buildings?
Yes, staff's in the school, yeah.
Um, will there be any actual live instruction going on virtually during those days?
In general, no, but there could be. We ask teachers to build in time, like 40 minutes of a class period time or at some point to check in with their virtual students. You know, if the, if half your class is in-person, you're checking in with them very regularly. It's more difficult to check in with your virtual students. And so if if virtual students were having trouble or they wanted some one-on-one time, almost like a college professor would have office hours, we'd build in that check-in time. But it wouldn't be direct instruction. It might be just tutoring or answering questions or referring them to resources. So it's not direct teacher instruction. But even in in live classrooms, it's not all direct instruction. It's, I mean, I don't know that we would want our teachers, every teacher, every hour for 40 minutes lecturing at kids. A lot of the work is collaborative, the students are working independently, they're sharing their performance assessments.
No longer 1956.
No.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Friday, Friday per month, three-day day as a second as learning day for students and a planning professional development day.
Second, sir. Motion, second. Any other questions on that?
I guess I could comment, it's one that I shared with the staff, it's what I'm worried about. Getting rid of eight days of instruction. You know, that's kind of a big deal, and even though we get credit for it because we give kids some online projects that they can work on. I guess I still feel like we're losing eight days of, you know, the kind of quality education that we ordinarily provide around here. For me to put it, it really was put into context when I sat down and I thought about the math on it. Okay, we spend $31 million a year educating our kids. Laura reminded me that we had 179 days, 179 days of instruction per year. That means that keeping the kids out of school for eight days is costing us about $1.3 million, somewhat more than that. So I feel like this is not an inconsequential decision to suddenly say, okay, we're going to not educate the kids the way that we're supposed to for those eight days. I was really hoping for a solution that gave the teachers the time that they need and the kids the the instruction that we hoped they would have. You know, frankly, I'm disappointed that there doesn't seem to be another alternative. Would hope that if this gets passed, that were there to be a request for additional teacher and service days, that we look at things like extending the school year or cutting into Christmas vacation or spring break and and putting the kids in the classroom for the statutory minimum number of days and not trying to take credit for, you know, asynchronous learning that doesn't involve any actual teacher instructions.
I could, yeah, Jim, I I'm not disagreeing with you, I think it's a good thing. But I looked at the alternative, trying to weigh it out, and if we have the burnout of just, I've been doing some subbing and seeing what's going on in the schools and visiting, it's just unbelievable. The burnout and the extenuating circumstances. I agree with you on that aspect, but I think that it could be a lot worse if we don't offer that time for that. Even the students, I think, have appreciated it to kind of recruit. And I could be totally off-base, but I hear what you're saying, but I think it could be a lot worse as far as I give a damn, you know, going through the motions versus what our staff does, putting their heart and soul into it. No, it doesn't make sense. I know, I can't argue with the dollar amount of the number.
And and I don't dispute that the teachers are in unusual times, and they need the time. But it doesn't necessarily have to be, teachers need it, so students lose it. There are ways to do this where as kids get the education, the teachers get the time that they need. I realize that that's a complicated goal to address.
It is, especially when learning doesn't begin at home anymore, right?
Yeah, well, my kids teach me things all the time.
Look at the man, hold the question. Okay, what question's been called? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Sue, next meeting is December 3rd? Finance and legislation, Craig.
We simply have a meeting scheduled that you can see in the report, October 29th. Special board meeting for budget adjustments and then to certify the levy. So I think maybe everybody got that information out there, and we'll just have a, maybe it's probably not a real long one, but.
Is that for sure the date now?
Yes.
Because under the new business, the other action, I don't know that.
Yeah, we did identify the the date via email.
So it's October 29th? Is everybody, so we can make sure we have a quorum, do that date work for?
What's the date?
Thursday, October 29th, 7:00 a.m. Probably less than 30 minutes. Sometimes we've done it in 10.
There'll be one difference this year. We're going to bring two levies and two budgets. $1.7 million difference between the two. And then you'll approve both pending the results of the referendum. That way, we can get our tax levy certification to the municipalities on time because that's due by November 10th to them. So we'll have to wait until we see the results of the vote, and then I'll know which one to send to the municipalities.
Okay. Everybody okay with the 29th?
It's not a poll break, is it? Is that the week before?
Late before is the poll break.
Right.
Yeah, I should be.
We can all, we all have the ability to do virtual, too, so you can be here, you have these dial-in for that 10-minute meeting. Okay, buildings and grounds.
Yeah, a number of things, a couple of things. You know, talked about the annexation with Heartland of the Arrowhead properties. Has been formally applied for to the village. Bob and Laura presented information to them. Jeff worked very hard on getting signatures and coming up with numbers and all the other stuff for that. I know Tim was working on some of that stuff, we'll talk about later. So there will be a meeting on the, the planning commission on October 19th to present information to, basically the same information to the planning commission. And then hopefully, if they agree with it, it will be going to the, should be going to the village board for approval, or at least for a discussion, hopefully approved on October 26th.
Just for, just for a clarification, I I received an email. They actually have to flip it, so you have to go to the village board first now, attorney and the village attorney, and then it'll go back to the planning commission, so it's going to get bumped to November planning commission. So there's not a, there's not a specific reason to derail it, it's just whatever reason the attorney. attorney wants to do it the other way. So we're trying to work with the village to see if we can just do both meetings in November, village board meeting, the next week, planning commission, and the next week, village board meeting again, and it would be done. Planning commission is sandwiched between the two village board meetings. But we'll keep everybody private.
So you go to the village board, then the planning commission, and they have to go back to the village board? Okay. Kevin Limpson gave us an update on the projects that have been completed this year. The new visitor bleachers are done and installed, the asphalt walkways in. We had first home game, we actually had a locking number of 10 people using the visitor bleachers and it mustered that load, so that was very promising.
I sold a lot more tickets to the Bonn.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
The Saguay Mosquito, the first.
Oh, I see, okay.
It was probably more than 10, but not a whole lot.
Well, I mean, I think I sold 150 tickets over there.
Anyway, that's been done. Asphalt's been done, there's some adjustments to it. There's a, there's a low spot up by the pass shed on the north end of the task carts. Lighting has been delayed. They had some issues getting the hardware in here for the lights. All the parking lots are going to LED lighting, so that should be quite a savings in electrical costs.
You noticed it too. You guys have noticed the parking lots are big.
That's about it. I mean, it's been a good year. Last stuff was done during the break. I shouldn't say break, during lack of instruction because of the COVID, so they were able to chime on a bunch of stuff and get that done prior to school being out and so on. Next meeting will be on November 4th.
Okay. Nothing to report under personnel, policy, John, just have another meeting coming up?
Finally, we're gonna have a meeting. You're all welcome.
October 21st, the next meeting for policy. WASB, Kent or, yeah?
We've just been, I'm sure you've all been getting updates from WASB as far as invites to various webinars and that kind of stuff. I did attend the one with, that Bob was a part of. I was a little disappointed, not in Bob.
No, he was stellar.
He was stellar. I just wanna make that clear, but at one point, like, there were only like 33 or 34 people signed into the thing, and it's like, really?
Well, then it means like 10 or 12% were pre-polluted.
Were from this district. So it was, it was an interesting, interesting webinar.
It's kind of, it's kind of fun because I sent text messages. Kent just see, I can see his face, facial reaction to this. We'll tell you what's hit him.
Yeah. But anyway, if you're interested, those sign up, you know, it's kind of an interesting way of doing things. If you do and you haven't done it, allow some time to possibly have to load some out some software to handle the Zoom meeting or whatever, so. I don't know, do you have anything, Tim? The state convention's going to be virtual this year, so I'm not exactly sure how some of that's gonna work. That'll be a stick too.
I think our, I think, was that after our last board meeting was when we did the talk on school resource officers? That was after our last.
It was, yeah.
So that seemed to go, that seemed, I think you reported on last month, that was part of that panel. It seemed to go pretty well. Everybody was congenial to each other, you know, had varying opinions on school resource officers, but that was very positive. Didn't embarrass Arrowhead, so it was a good thing.
No, at least not very much.
No more than usual.
No more than usual.
CSU, Sue, anything on CSU?
Um, no, this is very interesting.
All right, and playing transactions, we have a couple of retirements. Should be in the packet.
I'm open to accept the retirement.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on those? You're none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next one's contracts and letters of appointment, also in the packet.
For approval?
And motion is second. Any questions on those? You're none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion action on the superintendent's goals for 2020, 2021 school year, also in the area. And I just to gloss over that for everybody.
Sure, usually my main four goals are based on our focus plan, which is hanging on both sides of the room. And then within those key enduring goals, there's always different work each school year. So in the prepare students for success beyond high school graduation, within that broad goal, this year's focus will be revisions and enhancements of virtual learning format as compared to our spring emergency virtual learning. And also preparation for and implementation of learning formats, in-person, hybrid, and virtual. So if we need to move in between formats as a whole school, we need to be prepared for that. The second goal, foster and nurturing positive learning culture. This year, the particular or extra areas of focus would be implementation of enhanced emotional and social, emotional and social supports for students, staff, and parents during the challenging times of the health pandemic. We're really trying to pay attention to that, not just for our students, but our staff that are having a hard time and for families. Adam and the student services team have been offering a monthly online meeting for parents and an opportunity to learn and talk, which is helpful. We know that this is, this is tough times. I mean, just educationally, it's very different for students and teachers in an academic sense, but then that emotional realm, students are missing out on a lot. There's so many changes here at school. Many of them have significant changes at home. There's parents that have been laid off. They might be getting sick to death of being with siblings. The percentage, the normal percentage of students that have anxiety or depression any given year has, has bolstered because of the pandemic. So one of our, our county health department calls every Wednesday, all superintendents in our county meet with the health department, and they actually had their director of, I don't know, psychological director, I'm not sure what his title is, but he was explaining how students are taking a hit. And some of the providers in our area for adolescent psychology are actually maxed out. They can't take new patients. So it's, it's something that while we don't do professional private practice here, we're being cognizant of the fact that it's something that we have to pay attention to with our students, staff, and families. The third general goal is communicate effectively. This particular year, communications have continued and evolved internal and external regarding COVID-19. So the changes to our instructional programming, information going out has been important, gathering feedback coming in has been important. And also our COVID information, so we have a dashboard now that every, well, minimum of once a week, but I usually change it about three times a week of how many positive COVID cases we have, how many close contact quarantines we have, and I'll provide you that information later on in the agenda. And then also a big communication effort this school year is regarding our infrastructure referendum. So I've already done a brief update on that. The fourth broad goal is to advance facility infrastructure and technology to support student learning. Certainly, one of the areas of focus are around, is around prioritizing and planning of potential facility improvements through the November 3rd referendum. So if that referendum should pass, we want to be ready to go. And our next B and G committee meeting, we'll be talking more about that, kind of a, a plan for roughing HVAC units, technology. Although, we can't possibly have a detailed plan for five years' worth because we don't know in year four or five what the highest priority will be, but we want to try and map out what we do know. We also don't know what costs will be five years from now compared to this year. And then another infrastructure technology piece is supporting technology-enhanced instruction during in-person and virtual instruction as teachers are doing that simultaneously. There's been a big focus on that. And then beyond those typical four goals, other areas of special attention necessary this year would be to plan and conduct the process to hire a new principal. And so that I plan on starting up probably, I mean, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes processes that will happen, starting in December and January, and then getting a position posted perhaps February, by March, get the process rolling. So we need to update the job, well, actually, we'll have to write a job description, write and post the position advertisement, recruit exceptional candidates, develop interview questions, identify interview team members, conduct the interviews, which will likely be screening and final round, conduct reference checks, background checks, negotiate a contract, and then finalize the hire with you, the school board. Another area of focus this year is to investigate and develop and implement the partnership with the village of Heartland, which you've been kept informed about regarding a possible annexation and also a possible connector road or runway. And then another area of focus this school year, as you also already know, would be investigate, plan, and implement the sale of the 40-acre plot of land north of Highway K. We haven't officially had the board vote to do that yet, but we want to have everything lined up so when we're ready to take that vote, it's ready to go. Similarly, the next, one of the, yeah, the next action item for the board on your agenda tonight is to approve that petition for annexation. We've already been working on it, we've turned it in to the village, it hasn't been acted upon, but our board, we haven't had a meeting for a month, so we'll ask you to approve that petition as well. So those are the, the typical goals that I would propose, plus the extras for this school year that hopefully won't have to go on for many more school years related to COVID or hiring a new principal.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the goals for 2021.
So.
Second, any questions on those? Hearing none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, as Laura mentioned, we do have a discussion action to approve the submission of the petition for annexation of all Arrowhead Union High School District property from the town of Merton into the village of Heartland. As mentioned, we already submitted the document under the belief that we're gonna be on October 19th, planning commission, so we had, we had to submit it 15 days ahead of that. They weren't aware that the attorney was gonna flip it on them, but it's fine too. We've already had these discussions about doing this, moving, continue to move it forward anyway, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that submission.
Can I move?
Second.
Second, any questions on that?
Why are there three parcels?
Because we have the original parcel where South Campus sits, another parcel where North Campus sits, and then the farm. There's actually three, there's actually four different tax keys because the 88ers have the different tax key than the 32, 34. And then it's just the progress of how we bought the properties in 57.
I think divide Arrowhead into two parcels.
What's that?
They divide Arrowhead into two different.
Yeah, because they were bought in two different time periods.
Oh, all right.
Forgive me if I ask this, or this was discussed earlier, does the village of Merton, or the town of Merton, have any objections to this action?
They can object, but they, we can't change it again, so. Nobody's heard, I haven't, nobody's contacted me, we haven't heard any, we would see, obviously, when we go to the village board meetings, but they've been posted there too, and nobody's said anything. So we'll see how they continue to move along because they, part of their process is they have to notify everybody who lives within 500 feet of the Arrowhead campus as part of the planning commission's process that they have to do. I think you had actually get one call about.
I had one call today about that, but so the notice is out there, and it was someone that lived just across from Arrowhead was asking questions about it and what that, for them, would they be able to stay in the town of Merton is what, what the question was, and they would be, they will. I mean, we're only talking about north, south, and the field recovery.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve that submission. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is just a COVID-19 update, I think, probably did on everything. Let's see, have anything else, Laura?
I just have data to share. So as of the end of yesterday, we have seven students that are positive with COVID, which is down significantly a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago. You might remember we hit a high point of 23 students. Those 23 students yielded 364 close contacts. The close contacts have to quarantine for 14 days. So now we're down to seven students that are ill, and that is consequently, there are 52 students in close contact quarantine. So those, both of those numbers are down significantly, not due to anything changing that we've necessarily done. It would seem that most of our cases, we only have these students six hours a day. So oftentimes, the students that are getting sick, maybe getting sick during the 18 hours, they're not here. There's no way to know that for sure, but our numbers are down. Part of the reason might be how many students are choosing virtual instruction and therefore our in-person students can spread out more in the classrooms. We now have, we started the year with 10 or 11% choosing virtual. We now have about 594 students choosing virtual. So that is 28% of our population has chosen virtual. If you add in the seven ill students and the 52 close contacts, like this week, it's 33% of our population is learning from home virtual. In some classrooms, that might be one or two students on a computer screen. In some classes, depending on the week, it could be the majority of students. We had one of our autos classes where there was one student in the room. A different day, there were three students in the room, the rest were virtual. So it's, that adds a challenge for our students and our teachers.
It kind of equals between North and South Campus.
That's all combined.
Oh, no, I meant in terms of that, by, 28% of the students.
There are more juniors and seniors choosing virtual than freshmen and sophomores, but not a huge significant difference. I, I think the reason being is athletics. We have a lot of athletes that have chosen to go virtual because if they're identified as a close contact in school, two weeks, they can't participate in their sport. Where if they're at home, they, they aren't labeled a close contact, at least by Arrowhead. They still could be through the health department.
I partially answered the question I was gonna ask, Laura. If you know what's driven up the numbers from approximately 11% to 28%, I mean.
Athletics is a big part of it, and we saw, we've also heard from families that just kids being labeled a close contact without notice, they're out for two weeks, then they're back. Might happen again, they feel like it's unsettling. So for some, it's just, they feel like it's more consistent to be at home. At Arrowhead, we have more athletes participating in fall sports than we do in winter, just because the teams, there's 160 football players between all those teams. So I think it'll be interesting to see almost 600 choosing virtual now as we get into the winter seasons. Will that drop off because it's more athletic-related, or will it maintain or go up? I don't know. I think it'll just be interesting. I, I don't know. I think it'll just be interesting to see how that plays out. And then spring, we go back to higher numbers of athletes, but not as high as fall.
Another question I've got is, can you explain what the contact tracing mechanism is? I mean, is that, are we doing a lot of that? Is the health department part of it? Is it shared?
We are doing a ton. The health department has a grant, and they hired 220-some new people to do contact tracing, and it's not even touching what it should be and could be. They're spending a quarter million dollars a week. Their money's going to run out, well, now, as of today's update, by mid-February. We tend to, in theory, someone is tested, they're tested to be positive. The county gets that information. In theory, they would be telling us. We are almost always learning first because our families are telling us before the health department has the ability to tell us. Our new district nurse, like, welcome to the job, Katie.
Yeah, really.
She, we actually had to kind of tell her, you have to stop. She was doing 15, 16-hour days. It was weekends, it was nights. She was never stopping. So, you know, we've helped her just realize it's okay. So it's more like 10 or 12 hours. And we've got, I mean, I'm looking at, Adam has done a bunch of work. Our two associate principals have done a bunch of work. Our health room assistant that kind of works opposite of the nurse, Paula, she's been putting a lot of time and effort in. Our attendance secretaries are putting a lot of time and effort in. It's, it's huge.
We looked at one of our health room aids, kept them down position to five, up, we put it up to 5.75. So we had one that was 5.75, we had another that was below that, we upped her to 5.75. Our numbers are down now. If we get going back up, you can underestimate, underestimate how big of an impact the, when we were climbing there at the end of September, that had on like our entire building operation. So we're probably going to shuffle, we got one position that we might shuffle around within the building just to get extra hands on critical work if we need to. So essentially pulling from like a copy room position and then putting them into do some critical piece because the, the contact tracing involves, involves quite a bit. So we have to get the positive case, call the health department, confirm that we have a positive case and they also have a positive case. Get on the seating charts, pull the data from the seating charts that we have in terms of who's in close contact within those rooms. Confirm that back with the teachers because we don't want to pull somebody we don't have to pull somebody. Cross-reference that with the days that they started feeling symptoms. We go back 48 hours from that, figure out A and B day schedule, get all their information down in a sheet that needs to go to the county kind of simultaneously in there. Once we have the names, we can start pulling kids. We've learned that we really need, once we pull kids with, because of cell phones, the parents are being notified, we want to make sure though that we get our notification, email, and telephone call out to parents at the same time going from there. And then the students leave the building, we breathe them before they leave the building. We breathe them as we pull from class. Now they're used to it. The first couple of ones, there were tears. Now they're just like, ah, it's me.
They joke about it. It's like Russian roulette. My time.
Well, we bring them down, we prep them on the way down. We have our counselors involved. Now pulling students makes us a little bit more efficient in that manner. Katie, or Paul, or Danielle, debrief with them and kind of hears what's happening. We give them the handout. It's also emailed out to parents. Counselors check in with those students a day or two after school just to make sure that they're getting online and everything done. And then on the back end of that, it's, you know, the teachers are always dealing out with who's going to be in my classroom, who's not going to be in my classroom. So there's quite a bit involved too. Having staff members go out, we know is like the worst, you know, there's no good thing, but it's really the worst thing that can happen. You know, we just, we had a situation where because of the nature of the job, one staff member took out two staff members and that, you know, that's kind of been a whole thing. So I, I have to say that the stretch of downward trend that we've had has been nice. It reminded a lot of us what our job actually is during, like, the normal times when we were not doing what we usually do during that stretch. But the numbers are looking better, and the biggest thing that we're seeing now is that we are not getting as many close contacts each day. So like the last two total that we had were 10 between the two of them, so they were five each. So with the less amount of kids in the building, there's more being thrown. Also what's happening, this is the new latest trend that we're noticing, that students out on quarantine, if they get sick, they're getting sick towards the end of their quarantine time. So they might be, like, if Sue's in close contact with me, I'm out. And she's nearing her end of her quarantine, those students are, I think it's like they're developing symptoms late, but then they're also not having that ripple effect where like Sue's taking out more because she's already been at home and she's developed symptoms. So that whole contact tracing, close contacting is working as it should be, right? So if I'm positive, the idea is to get everybody who's below the 6 feet of me for 15 minutes or more out of the building because there's a higher chance that they're going to get track COVID-19 in that situation. And when we're having that happen in those cases, then that's not creating that ripple effect of taking out more kids. So we'll see what happens. We, you know, everything's new this year. We don't know if it's going to have gone up, go down, go back up, if we're going to level off where we're at. We don't, we don't know the impact of almost any event. It's very hard to say at this time.
I had no idea the extent, the impact that that has. Now, going back to Sue getting sick towards the end of her, let's say, day 12 of her quarantine, I presume that means now she's extended another 10 or 14 days beyond that.
Yeah. And that's why, you know, families are just like, I'm out. Because they, they, they end up having enough of it, so. You get, you get some kids that get hit twice too with the quarantines that come back for a couple of days.
Oh, jeez. Rock the revolving door.
Yeah, and that's a term that we've had, like the revolving door. And that's a, that's a part of the thing that's tough for teachers is just like, okay, I thought I had 10 to my best. I don't have 10 for how many days, you know.
I imagine because of that, they're also almost constantly revamping their seating charts.
We're, we're keeping, we're keeping seating charts the same because we don't have to revamp them every day. But now what's happening is that because we have so much fewer kids in our classrooms and the nature of the revolving door, you want to keep updating it, they have kind of their base seating chart. They mark attendance for who's here, then they kind of scatter, and the teachers then know, okay, six hour, right now, I would have no close contacts, right? Or this is what was done on that day. So our communication back and forth with the teacher, it's making our product, our, our process longer to get the close contacts out of the building, but it's becoming more accurate.
And less kids being close contact.
That's very apparent in your numbers. From seven and only affecting 52 other kids, from 23 and affected 364, that's a huge.
Yeah, yeah. And then you think about it as the natural progression, right? We were always going to go up for a point, and at some point, it was going to level off because enough people were out of the building, so. And the downward trend is surprising and a good surprise for everyone.
It's like all the hard work, well, for everybody.
So has the county given any direction? Because you see in the news now they opened up State Fair Park for, because of the hospitals. I know mainly it's with Green Bay, but it's affecting the entire state. Has there been any discussions about?
Well, we meet, Ben Jones is the county health director, so we meet with he and about four of his team members every Wednesday. So we're kept, as superintendents, we're kept surprised of what the county numbers look like. And he even commented, the, I mean, our county is not in good shape in terms of disease right now. It's, the last week's average is 175 new cases per day. When the disease was early on and they started tracking it, it was 40 new cases a day. So that, I mean, that's a big difference. It's the highest numbers. There was a peak in July where it was more than 100 new cases a day, but now it's, you know, some days we're hitting 100. The good news about that is that our hospital, hospitalization rate in our county is not at a burden point. And so although it's creeping up, it's not at a danger level. We're up in Green Bay, Appleton, they're at 100%, 95 to 100% capacity in their hospitals and their ICU units. And they're going to be shipping people down here to State Fair Park. Right now, our hospitals are managing it in our county. They, our, our county health department can only get that information from our, I guess, four major healthcare systems. It's not including children's or freighter, Milwaukee hospitals.
Okay. We already set the date for the special meeting, so we have no donations this time. Any future agenda items? Hearing none, pursuant to state statute 1985-1 and E, the board will move into closed session, reconvene to address public business matters. Public business includes competitive price bargaining, repairs, potential land sale, and partnership with the village of Heartland. So entertain a motion to move to closed session.
So moved. Second.